Okay, welcome everyone, we're gonna get started. Okay.
You ready?
Okay, Bill.
Okay. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act. Proper public notice of this meeting was published in the local papers on December 6th and December 7th. If any board member or member in the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on Cable Television 77 and Fios Channel 46. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cellphones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of a device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. If you could please rise for the salute to the flag.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your statement under the Open Public Meeting Act, I gave a board member a copy of the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act that have been violations in the past, and I hope tonight we don't have those violations. It's being passed along down the line in reference to public being respected and not gagged and quieted and silenced, and I need that back because that's the only original copies I have. As far as the Media Open Public Meeting Act and the regular provisions, counsel.
Are you referring to a specific provision?
Yeah, well, I got some of them highlighted, but when he made his statement in the beginning of the meeting about the Open Public Meeting Act violations, in the past has been clearly violations, and I hope there's none tonight. So with those packets, because I know we have a lot of new members, maybe it will help, so we won't have any violations. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
No, I'll just, I'll bring attention, I'll bring to the attention of the Board that the document on top references the exceptions which apply when you wish to have an executive session or a closed session. So we need to be scrupulous about what's appropriate for an executive session and to make sure that the motion going into executive session is precise in accordance with the law. The other document handed up is an October 17th, 2013 flyer from the Digital Media Law Project on the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. And while it doesn't identify any specific violation, it accurately recites the remedies available should there be a denial. But I think the best course of action is to make sure there is no denial. And other than that, there's nothing in the materials that I need to bring the attention of the Board, and I'll return them to Ms. Waiters during the, during the first break. I'll, I'll hand them down to you during the first break. Thank you, Madam President.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Biancamano?
Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Klevfeld?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Silveloff?
Here.
Ms. Stromwall?
Here.
And Ms. Ty Roller?
Here.
Okay, now we'll start with the recognition portion of the meeting. Dr. Hernandez?
Good evening, Madam President and fellow board members. Once again, it's an honor to recognize the Students of the Month for November 2014. Starting off with our Joseph F. Brandt Primary School student, kindergarten student, Sienna Kay. Sienna is a great role model for her peers. She takes pride in her work and follows directions. She is always eager to help and is very kind to others. We are so proud of Sienna. Shine on. Please join me in congratulating Sienna Kay. Tomorrow will be Sienna's sixth birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Our next student is a fifth grader from Calabro School, Elia Moscow. Elia has a positive attitude and is always polite towards her classmates and teachers. Okay, she's always strives to stay focused and completes all her assignments in a timely manner. Her work habits and desire to do well have helped other students work harder academically. Elia is truly a pleasure to have in class and exhibits great school leadership and friendship towards her teachers and peers. It is with great honor that I present her with this certificate as November Student of the Month. Please join me in congratulating Elia. Our next student is a third grader from Connors Elementary School, Jayla McDonald. Curious, cooperative, and responsible are just a few qualities that Jayla McDonald possesses that helps her stand out amongst her peers. In just three months, Jayla has demonstrated excellent academic growth and has shown leadership abilities. Her creativity and drive for learning enables Jayla to problem solve and apply knowledge while having fun discovering and exploring. Jayla's determination will assist her in succeeding in any and all future endeavors. Please join me in congratulating Jayla. Our next student, this is a sixth grader from Wallace Elementary School, Denise Pontone. Denise is an excellent student. She is doing great in math and always participates. She has a great attitude and tries her best. Denise works well with others. She is considerate to her classmates and always willing to help others. Please join me in congratulating Denise. Our next student is a seventh grader from Hoboken Junior High School, Angel Lizardi. Angel is an excellent student. His work is always done on time and professionally. He appears very quiet and shy, but he has a lot of knowledge to offer his peers and classmates. He is definitely a shining star for the seventh grade. Please join me in congratulating Angel. Our last student is a senior from the high school, Hoboken High School, Rebecca Manila. Rebecca is a very diligent student. She does not need to, she does not need to be reminded about dotting her i's and crossing her t's. She has shown a great effort in all, all her classes, but in particular, media production. She is not a student in which filmmaking comes easy to her. However, she works hard in class every day and is successful because of her perseverance and determination. This is why she is a Student of the Month at the Hoboken Junior/Senior High School. Please join me in congratulating Rebecca. Denise Pontone just showed up, we'll bring her up.
Should, would you read her, you should read her.
Denise is an excellent student. She is doing great in math and always participates. She has a great attitude and tries her best. Denise works well with others. She is considerate to her classmates and always willing to help others. Please join me in congratulating Denise. And that concludes our recognitions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have the reports for this evening, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, I have one very special thing to report. Last night, we had a parent meeting for the PARC test, which is coming down the pike here pretty soon in March. And it's the Partnership for Assessment for readiness for college and careers. And we did have about thirty families show up, and we had an interesting presentation that in the beginning, I said we'd be imparting information and maybe lowering the level of anxiety with the parents, but I think we raised it a little bit. But anyway, there's a lot of good information, and we are going to have a follow-up session at Calabro. I'm not sure of the date yet, but we will be advertising that on our website. PARC is a very different kind of assessment, and it is based on the Common Core, which we have been teaching all along. So, you know, you hear that old cliche about teaching to the test, that's not real. That's just overdone. What we've been doing is teaching the Common Core, and the assessment is based on the Common Core. So that's why people might think we're teaching to the test. But anyway, it was an interesting night, and if you get the opportunity to come out for our second round, please do so. I'd like to just comment on a resolution for the Board to just make a comment on 9.09, the transfer of Mr. Shannon. And just to straighten that out, it's not a full-time transfer. It's temporary, but it's also part-time. He will be spending some time in Connors as needed and some time at Wallace as needed. And we'll see how that evolves. So I just wanted to make, make sure the Board and the public understood that.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett?
Yes, I have five things to report, and I will also end my report with presenting Mr. Dieter Lurch from Lurch-Vincy Higgins to comment and present our annual financial report. So if you'll just bear with me until we get to that point, I do have some things to report out. First item is the election results. We did receive certified election results from the county clerk, and I'll read them into the record. The total number of votes received in order of, as they were found on the ballot. Brian Murray, 2,115 votes. Antonio Gray, 2,098 votes. Sharon Angley, 2,199 votes. Peter Biancamano, 2,540 votes. Monica Stromwall, 2,261 votes. Patricia Waiters, 2,027 votes. Lynn Dansker, 1,635 votes. Frances Rhodes Kearns, 2,046 votes. And finally, Personal Choice received 24 votes. Total number of registered Hoboken voters, 35,442. And eligible votes cast, 9,222. So the three that received the majority of the votes cast in alphabetical order by last name is Sharon Angley, Peter Biancamano, and Monica Stromwall. So I certify that these will be entered into our minutes and will pass them off to my assistant. Second item, we had 10.08. We discussed this in Finance Committee. It's an award that we'd like to present tonight. Has to do with our Sandy Grant Funds, which is the United Arab Emirates-funded. We were able to go out and solicit bids, so I'll read the resolution as I present, meaning fill in the blanks because it was today. So whereas pursuant to the New Jersey Public School Contract Law, the Hoboken Board of Education advertised on November 28, 2014, a request for bids, network upgrade. A project identified and included in the district's Hoboken Sandy New Jersey Relief Fund Grant Implementation Plan. It did subsequently hold a pre-bid meeting on December 4, 2014. And whereas the bids were opened and read aloud, had a meeting held on December 9, 2014, and examined by district personnel for conformance with the bid specifications and New Jersey Public School law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hoboken Board of Education hereby awards a contract subject to the bid documents in New Jersey Public School law for the purchase and installation of equipment that will comprise a network upgrade as outlined in bid specifications dated November 28, 2014 to Millennium Communications Group, Inc. They're located 11 Melanie Lane, Unit 13, East Hanover, New Jersey, as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $467,398.50. That is found on the agenda tonight with that particular information. Another item we'd like to discuss at this point, and just to report out, as far as every, an increase. We were found, it has to do with our charter school payment. We received notification in November that the transfer funds to charter schools had increased roughly to the amount of, I'll give you the exact dollars, it's $216,871. So that basically increased our total payment or transfer to charter schools from $8.3 million to $8.5 million. It's due mainly to the net increase of enrollment across all charter schools and is a requirement for the district to transfer those funds to the various charter schools as per payment schedule provided by the Department of Education. Due to that, and the fact that we lost roughly 669,438 in school choice aid, the district implemented a spending freeze amid November, and my office continues to restrict spending as it relates to general spending, discretionary spending, but we will move forward on health and safety items and things that are deemed to be necessary and justified. Model Congress, like to report, I received some information today relating to an ongoing project and a trip out to the Model, I should say, the Harvard Model Congress. It'll be found and confirmed at the next meeting. It's roughly $13,000, we're fine-tuning the purchase orders and requisitions as we speak. The reason I raise it here tonight in anticipation of next meeting is that we have to advance funds to three institutions to secure registration and hotel reservations. So again, that, that resolution to approve that, confirming the trip, will be found on the next Board agenda. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Again, it's about the fifteenth, roughly the fifteenth to seventeenth, if I forget the dates right, is when it's occurring, and the next Board meeting is January 13. And the fifth item is the, as Mr. Biancamano had requested at last meeting, the update on the Brand SDA project. We still are working, and there's a back and forth with the SDA. They've asked for some information, we have provided it. Last notification that I received was they were satisfied with our responses to the various questions. We have not received any documentation to date, which would allow us to go out for bid specs. So we're waiting for that release of documentation. And again, I have all my fingers crossed and a couple toes, so hopefully we'll get that soon. With that, if I could have Mr. Dieter Lurch present the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report?
Thank you very much. Dieter Lurch, partner in the firm of Lurch-Vincy and Higgins. It's my pleasure this evening to present the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Hoboken School District for the year ended June 30, 2014. Every board member should have received two reports from our office. One being the actual financial report, which is the thicker of the documents. And then we're also required to submit a Accountant's Management Report, which deals with any issues of non-compliance with regard to statutes, that be Title 18A, New Jersey Administrative Code, and the various other regulations. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to actually bridge last year and share with the Board, and I was very proud of the district. The district actually filed its June 30 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for June 30, 2013. And they filed that with the Government Finance Officers, which is a GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, that's a national association headquartered out of Chicago. And what that association really does is they take the financial report of the district and they do a comprehensive review and grade the report for really excellence in financial reporting. And I think that deserves, it's very noteworthy, because what it really does is they compare you not only to New Jersey cities and communities, but they compare you to San Francisco, to New York City, to New Orleans. And you did receive the, the Award of Excellence, the Hoboken School District did. So I think that's quite an achievement. Very, very few schools, you know, in the state of New Jersey actually attain that level. So I think that's a compliment to the entire Board and to the administration and the business office in doing that. Thank you. Moving on into the audit for the June 30, 2014, it's my pleasure to report that we did provide an accountant's opinion, our auditor's opinion, as the independent auditor for the district, an unqualified report, which is the highest-level report the district can receive, which means in our opinion, after our examination of all the financial transactions for the, for the fiscal year ended June 30, we feel that the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the district. So that's the highest-level report you can receive. It's an unqualified auditor's report. I'm just gonna spend a few minutes on the finances of the district. And let me say, the total assets of this school district, the total assets of the district is, I'm gonna round the numbers a little bit, but it's basically 25 million. Of that 25 million dollars under control of the district. And when I say the assets, there's two discussions. One is at a point in time, and when I talk about the assets, I'm really talking as of the point in time, June 30, when we closed out books. What did the district have under its control, and what did it own at June 30? Versus when I speak to the budgetary issues, that'll be for the 12-month period. Basically like a profit and loss type statement. But 25 million dollars under, under assets, and of the 25 million, the biggest is really your buildings, your, your property and buildings and grounds. About 19 million makes up the property, buildings and improvements. Roughly $6 million is basically cash that you have in the bank, as well as receivables that you have due from both the state and federal government. As far as the magnitude of operation of the school district, it's really a big business, as I think you all know, you deliver it every single day, and when you do the budget. The total revenue of the district was 65 million. Of the 65 million that the school district took in, 38 million came from taxes. So that's by far the single largest source. But in addition there to, 24 million, 24 and a half million came from the state. So you have state aid of 24 and a half million, and about another $2 million came from the federal government. So we got about 26 million from state and federal government, 38 million dollars from taxes, and then we also collect some miscellaneous-type fees. Against the 65 million that we took in, the district's, it was actually 65, let me round it, 65.5 million. The district spent 64 million. So you actually operated in the black by one and a half million. We took in a million and a half dollars more than was spent, which is a very positive thing for the district. Let me, let me just report to the Board what, and the only way, I just want to stop for one moment because I think it's important for the Board to understand. The budget under the Constitution of the state of New Jersey is a balanced budget, meaning that it's not designed to make any money. So really, in an ideal world, you would break totally even each and every year. You'd collect, you'd spend every dollar. The only way a surplus really is created in a district is if you don't spend everything that was budgeted. That's the primary source of a surplus. So really, by, by, and I don't want to use the word, but for lack of a better term, by being frugal or whatever, or just cutting back on spending through the operational year, that's how you really generated that million and a half dollars' worth of surplus. Now I'd like to share what, where that money go, because the money was used very wisely and very prudently. 500,000, I'm gonna round the numbers, but roughly 500,000 dollars of that million and a half went to fund that accumulated deficit in the Food Service Fund. And quite a few of the Board members have been here for years, and I can see, and if, you know, for the last two years or so, that's been a real serious concern of this district because we had an accumulated deficit over a million dollars in that Food Service Fund. So you've literally cut that in half. So 500,000 dollars of that, you used to cut that deficit in half. And you've also, in the budget that we're operating this year, you've also appropriated, I believe, $200,000 to further reduce that deficit. So I think, you know, based on the way the district's operating, that deficit should be eliminated, hopefully within the next 24 months or so. So let me go back now, the million and a half, half a million dollars went into the Food Service, you used to support the Food Service. Then you've also established a maintenance reserve, which is a legal reserve approved by the state of New Jersey. You're only allowed to reserve money that's legally approved by the State Department of Education. The maintenance reserve is one of them. And you've, you've funded, and this was through Board resolution too, you would have funded this in June of 14. You funded 700,000 into the maintenance reserve. So that money, and I think that's very important from a Board perspective as well, that money is now sitting aside, the 700,000 dollars. So should any unforeseen occurrence come, and we've, we all know we've had our share here, and I was just chatting, you know, two years ago, I remember Hurricane Sandy devastated, devastated the whole town and the whole state. Should anything unforeseen occur, and hopefully we don't have a catastrophe of that nature, but that 700,000 dollars can be clearly tapped for any major purpose. So if you have a roof, whatever, windows, boil or something. So I think that's very prudent to have that kind of a reserve available as well. And then we also, the district also funded a capital reserve. And you funded that for 100,000 dollars. So the capital reserve can be used for any capital improvement that the district sees, sees, sees as a priority. And that's also, I think, I can, I can share with you. Most of the districts that we represent now have established that capital reserve because the money is becoming a lot more difficult and a lot slower to get out of the SDA. So it's very difficult should you need some immediate capital improvement before you go through all the processes with the state. So now you actually have 100,000 dollars set aside for that too. So that's pretty much where that, where that money went. Over and above that, you also retained the 2% by statute, because you're permitted by statute to retain 2% of your operating budget. Rather than go through the complex formula, essentially how that's calculated is they only take into account your general budget. Your general budget's about 50 million. So you're really only allowed to have a million dollars, 2% of the 50 million, and then there's some minor exceptions. So your 2% reserve, which you do have, is 1,132,000. So you're about 1.1 million. So you have that 1.1 million, you have the maintenance reserve, the 700,000, and you have the 100,000 in the capital reserve. And you also now have cut that deficit in the Food Service in half. So I think from a financial point of view, this has certainly been a very, very sound fiscal year, and I think it's really a move, you know, back to a real stable fiscal condition for the district. If there's no other questions on the finances of the district, I'd like to just briefly touch on some of the regulatory issues, with the permission of the Board. As, as far as the regulatory issues, now I just want to mind, and your counsel is well-learned, and so he deals like we do quite a bit. You have Title 18A, you have Title VI of the Administrative Code, and then they give us an audit manual that's about 300 pages thick on top of that. So there's a lot of items that we're required to make comment on. But that do not... but that do not impact the fiscal operation of this district. And I wanna separate the two, because the comments that we have really are not any comment of any kind of deficiency or irregularity in the business office. They're more technical comments that the state requires us to report. And just briefly, I won't read them all, but just briefly, one of them is on the Chart of Accounts, state of New Jersey. When you do your budget, you have a school-based budget. So you gotta have literally 500 line items, probably more than 500 line items, when I start going through all the, probably more than 500. The state tells you where every single purchase order has to be put. And if something's not put on line 530, and it's supposed to be on 560 or whatever, and that's how technical it is, we have to report it. So that was one comment. It doesn't affect the bottom line at all. Just another comment is with the free and reduced lunch, which grabs a little bit of headlines, but I don't want nobody to have no unnecessary apprehension. Yeah, that's not the case here. We had that, and that was actually our client up north. But the free and reduced lunch, you have internal people reviewing it. And for those who may not be familiar, essentially what it is, you have an income guideline, you look at the income guideline, and you make sure that it meets that guideline, and then somebody internally has to sign off and certify that they approved that for that free or reduced lunch. So we're just, some of the issues that we had with the audit, we didn't always have a clear certification where somebody internally signs and says, "Oh yeah, I reviewed that." So that, again, is a technical issue of that. We also, just on deposits, when we talk about our deposits, wherever cash is collected, so in this case, it was Food Service Fund, too, we really recommend that that money be put away on a very timely basis, mean, be deposited on a timely basis. So that was one of our other comments as well. And then you also started a new program, this aftercare program. And anytime a district starts a new program, I think the program initiative comes first, is the way it should be, and then the accounting controls come after the fact. So it is a new program. We just recommend that some of the controls that you have already in your student activities and some of your other accounts, that you use those same controls in the aftercare program. That concludes my report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, so before, let's have questions from the board while Mr. Dieter's here. So I'll start from the left.
Should we ask a question about the finance, Mr. Moffett's report? Can we ask, or do you wanna do it later?
Let's do questions to Mr. Dieter, and then we'll do questions for all the committee reports.
Thank you for the great job, though.
Oh, thank you very much.
Mr. Gold, any questions for the auditor? Ms. Stromwell? Any from this side for the auditor?
Yes.
Peter?
Mr. Lurch, you've been auditing our school district now, since I've been on the board, which is about four years, and probably before I came on the board. I was just wondering, how do you come up with your analysis? Do you take it year by year, or do you start with, okay, I'm going to start with 2013, and then go back to the first year I started auditing the district, or whoever was auditing the district before you, and seeing where we had any issues regarding the audit? Such as, I remember, just giving you an example, my first year on the board, you came to us, and you were the one who brought it to my attention about the absorbent amount of legal fees that we've had in the district. And I didn't hear about them ever again, ever since that first year, and kudos to the board for decreasing those. So I'm just curious, I know you're consistently bringing up the food services, because I guess that's an area where we need to continue to tackle. But when you're coming up with your analysis, do you certainly just go from, okay, last year, in 2012, this was an issue, and let's see if the board fixed this issue? Or do you go all the way back to 2009, or whenever you started?
We, what do you call it? Well, I take two perspectives when we do the audit. Number one is, to answer your specific question, we always really go back to ground zero.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't just say, let's just follow up on those areas. We go to, you know, our big areas of focus is purchasing, bidding, quotes, proper, you know, procedures with purchasing, payroll's a large area for us. The finances in general, I mean, we represent about 70-some-odd school districts, so we have a good feeling of, you know, of what the financial level should be in the analytical. We do a lot of analytical reviews, so that we have an order of magnitude on that. The only reason why I bring up the food services, because quite honestly, that was a critical financial point. When I was here two years ago, I mean, that was a very tough time financially for this district, and I don't wanna go backwards. But, you know, at that point, we had this large deficit. It was only being financed because whatever general money you had, you had to lend to that Food Service, because you really used your own money to support that. And then I was doing the presentation that year, and Sandy had just hit us 60 days before. And there was no way that you could've planned for Hurricane Sandy in that operating budget that we were in. So that's why, I mean, and from my perspective, I look at a big global perspective as well, and I say, wow, we really need to watch this, because now we have all these unexpected, unanticipated expenses. We barely broke even the year before, and, you know, so certainly that's when that becomes a higher-risk, higher alert issue. And that's why I would use that and bring it to the board's attention. I really feel that, you know, I have an obligation to report to the board things not only that I've seen in the past, but also where you stand today, and where I think it's going from a financial point of view going forward.
And in the eight findings that you found for this year, relatively minor findings, at least in my opinion, and I know other board members feel the same way, were these findings that you found on a consistent basis from last year, or these were just new findings, or from, like you said, were these findings that were the same from ground zero when you first started auditing?
Yeah, I'm sure some of them were in the prior reports. But again, I thought your first question was right on point. That would not influence me one way or the other, so I wouldn't say, oh, what did I find two years ago? Let's go look there. We start the audit, like, right from scratch each and every single year, so. And again, I agree with that comment, and I think I said that before I did the AMR. They're technical findings, the state requires us to do it. The state looks at all these reports, we get called all the time from the state, on a good, in a good way. So, you know, we're required to report them, and I think it's a good financial report overall.
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification on the whole analysis process.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So for clarification for me, should we be happy with the results of this audit?
I think you'd be very pleased with the results of this audit.
Ms. Mitchell?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lurch.
Well, thank you very much. Quite an honor and a privilege to serve the board of Hoboken.
We appreciate your service.
Thank you so much. You have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue with committee reports, and I'll just start from the left. Ms. Stromwell, do you want to give your Curriculum and Programs Committee report?
Sure. So last Tuesday, December 2, we met from 4:00 to 6:00 in Demer's Conference Room. Myself as the chair, Dr. Hernandez, Mr. Charles Bartlett, Ms. Donna Diucanto, Ms. Irene Soboloff, Mr. David Shigaien, Executive Director of the Jubilee Center, Ms. Jessica Acruso, who is also the Executive Director of Education at the Jubilee Center. They were presenting us a draft proposal for a summer camp that they would like to do. They have one currently for the kindergarten through 5th grade. They want to expand and have it from emerging 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. So we just had a general discussion together, and basically thought it was a really wonderful idea, and they're gonna work out some of the details and present back to us. So with that, I will present more details as they become clearer and more consistent. And then afterwards, we talked with, about the New Teacher Institute Training, which was held on December 1, 2014. About 30 teachers attended, and this is for new teachers and non-tenured teachers. And the theme was a planning theme, and they discussed setting goals, objectives, in the Danielson rubric. And each of these staff members received one hour of professional development for this, and our staff has to have 20 hours of professional development, so this is really helpful. And the nice thing about this is that the staff get to meet different staff members, and each time there is a meeting, it's at a different location, so they get to be exposed to the different facilities in our district. And that was pretty much it, and we are seeing a consistent pattern of the staff members thinking that the new teacher developments are useful. And then we also discussed yesterday's park awareness that we had, and Dr. Braquel had touched on it a little bit, and it was very important and informational. And I just would like to point out that there was grade-level handouts about the park, and I would ask that our staff put those grade-level handouts on the website, so parents that couldn't attend can then find that information on our website.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
Sure. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Monday, December 3, from 10:30 to 12:30. In attendance were Dr. Braquel, myself, Mr. Gagliardi, Dr. Gold, Dr. Hernandez, Mr. Moffett, Ms. Ty Roller, and Ms. Soboloff. We discussed a request that the district distribute information about the upcoming lotteries for the three charter schools in Hoboken to students in our pre-K4 program. It was agreed that we will distribute this information, as was done last year, as part of our ongoing effort to help the charter schools improve their level of diversity. Mr. Gagliardi updated the committee on pending legal matters, and the committee reviewed all the agenda items for governance and personnel, and recommends all for approval by the board. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Kleppfeld, Finance?
Thank you. The Finance Committee did meet on Thursday, December 4, from 9:30 till 11:00. Joining me were Ms. Soboloff, Ms. Stromwell, and Mr. Moffett. We spent the bulk of the meeting having a much more in-depth conversation about what we just heard from Mr. Lurch. Donna Jaffet was, joined us along with another colleague. So we really kinda dug a little deeper, asked a lot of questions, and got really comfortable and really happy with the annual report and with the corrective action plan. We heard the good news in a little preview, and I'm glad you all had a chance to hear it, too. It was a nice report indeed. We reviewed other items on the agenda. There are not many, and all our questions were answered satisfactorily, and we recommend all for approval tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Soboloff?
Athletics and Performing Arts Committee met on December 3. In attendance was myself, Dr. Hernandez, Ms. Mitchell, and Ms. Evans, and Dr. Gold. Under Athletics, the academic performance of the fall athletes was discussed. 155 students participated in fall sports, and it was reported to us that student academic ineligibility is down from last year, and there was a large increase in the students eligible for the Special Athletic Directors Honors List, which is very nice, up to 34 from last year. So I wanted to say congrats to them, and the Athletic Department, and the coaches who support their athletes in their academic success. A three-year sport participation trend analysis was presented to us. And just FYI, tonight was the first swim team meet, so good luck to the Red Wings swim team. Under Performing Arts, the drama students will be volunteering at the Hoboken Family Alliance event at Maxwell's on December 11. December 19 is a Grease movie night at the Hoboken High School Auditorium. It's a fundraiser, probably a sing-along, I imagine it would be fun. The Drama Club and the Backstage Club will both be volunteering at the HEA Holiday Family Fun Night, which is on December 20, from 10 to 2 at the Hoboken High School Gym. And the event will celebrate the Hoboken Public Schools and honor our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Martone. And it'll feature game, food, activity, and breakfast with Santa. It's free and open to the entire community. Emmy award-winning actress Elaine Bromka will be visiting the high school and leading a monologue workshop for the theater students there, which is very nice for them. Rehearsals are underway for Grease and the State Speech and Theater Governors Award Competition. And the new Backstage Club is working hard building the car for the upcoming production of Grease in February. There are also boosters and advertisements, the program that comes out with the, that you see at the play, the playbill for the show. So if anybody's interested in supporting the students with a little booster or an ad, they can contact Ms. Miller at the Theater Department.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
The Facilities Committee met on December 3 at 4:15 PM. I'm attending as myself as the chair, Leon Gold, Tim Callagie as Director of Facilities, John Peprotta and Dorian From Sedexo. In Food Service, John Peprotta reported that the Thanksgiving specials at the elementary and high school cafeterias were a success, the children really enjoyed it. The committee requested that Sedexo increase their visibility to the students. Suggestions were to display large menu boards and banners near the entrances of the cafeterias. John also, John Peprotta also stated that not enough students from Connors are taking full advantage of the breakfast program. We suggest that John meet with the Acting Director of the HHA, the Housing Authority, in a joint effort to help encourage parents and students to take advantage and come to the breakfast program at Connors. These students will be better prepared for their school day if they have a good breakfast. So we're hoping these children can come to school a little earlier and enjoy the free breakfast program. Sedexo will be providing a dietitian to the district, and will initially avail them to the high school. They suggested incorporating lesson plans and a trip to a hydroponic organic farm in North Jersey. Tim Callagie suggested that Sedexo reach out to the middle school environmental science teachers to take advantage of this educational opportunity. Sedexo is waiting for a response from the state regarding the evening dinner program. Since we're a former Abbott district, or a Hine district, we could be eligible for no-cost dinners to all district students who are enrolled in after-school sports and a theater program within the high school building. And again, it's up to the state, it's in with the state right now. Sedexo will be attending a conference in February, and they may be able to introduce the program in March, but most likely it will be for the next school year. In Facilities, last month, the, let's see, the Brant scaffolding, last month, yesterday, was delayed progress, and they were holding the project specs before we could send the job out for bid. There were still some questions on the plans as of last month. Presently, the SDA signed off on the Architects Report, the comments and questions, and there were no more comments on the drawings, all was approved. We just have to wait for the SDA to give us approval and to advertise for the bids. So we expect to be, and we also expect to be fully reimbursed for the scaffolding, dating back to 2012. Let's see, the Demerus Auditorium, I believe you could all tell, the acoustics have been greatly improved. There are strategically-mounted speakers, one over there, there's some over here, and a monitor in the middle to improve the sound quality in the auditorium. The district was also considering holding the Board of Ed meetings at another venue when the weather gets warmer, because this auditorium doesn't have air conditioning. However, the Demerus Auditorium can be venting by opening the transoms around the room, which are the windows. There are, there are a couple on the, what is it called, the left side, to your left. Once they're vented, that should cool down the building in the warmer months. The custodial crew are working to scrape off the paint and grime to enable them, to open all of them in preparation for the warmer weather. We may not have to move our venue. Let's see, there were elevator and extermination inspections throughout the schools, and all were satisfactory. There's also a walkthrough for the UAE grant to bid on the networking project for the district, and the bids were due today. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, as, I'd just like to do a quick president's report first. On behalf of the whole board, I just want to, once again, congratulate our Finance Department, two of which are here, Mr. Moffett and Ms. Lopez, as well as the Finance Committee, because it's, you know, all their hard work that gets us an Award of Excellence on our audit. And I think this is our third year in a row that we've had an Award of Excellent, is that correct? And it's wonderful news, considering that when I came to the board in 2009, the audit report had 29 repeat audit violations, and we were in a situation that the state was considering taking over our finances. They're allowed to take over sections of your school. So it's been tremendous progress, it's been, for three years now, we've gotten this award, and I just want to commend, again, our financial professionals and also the Finance Committee. So another round of applause, I think, is in order. And I wanted to make note that you will see that in January, there are actually two meetings. There's a January 6 meeting, which is the reorg, and it will be the swearing-in of the three members, three trustees that were either re-elected, elected for the first time on the 6th. And then there'll also be the regular business meeting a week later on January 13. They can't be done at the same time, there's a rule about by what day. They can't be done at the same time, there's a rule about by what day we need to swear in the new officials. So just to remind about that. I wanted to just make mention of something that comes to me frequently in emails and also is expressed at the podium. Often people, when they are making comments or sending us correspondence, they refer to themselves as taxpayers. And I just wanted to point out that, well, everyone who is a resident of Hoboken, essentially by living here and breathing here and being a resident of Hoboken, you are in some respect a taxpayer. But perceiving yourself as a taxpayer, everyone who lives here, whether they envision themselves as a taxpayer or not, has exactly the same voice to us as elected officials. And I feel that sometimes I think people hear the word taxpayer and think that that is an identification of owning property or something like that, and it should not ever be felt that way. Whether you are a resident here that has property and is aware of tax associated with you, as long as you live someplace, you have a voice at these meetings, and you have a voice to send an email to any of us on the board. And I just wanted to say that for those out there that might not necessarily feel like a taxpayer because they pay a rent check, and because they're writing a rent check, they don't actually have that physical connection of writing a check to the city. But everybody who lives in the United States pays some form of tax, and everybody that lives here and in Hoboken has a right to the same level of services as anybody else. I just wanted to say that. And the other thing I wanted to clarify is there has been some writing about our high school, the amount of children that are in our high school, and the amount of free space. It's been alluded that when the building was built in 1962, I believe, and in those baby boom years, that there were probably close to between 1,200 and 1,500 students in that building. This is true. But I also want to remind everybody that we actually have someone on the board that was in the high school during those baby boom children years. There were 30 to 35 desks in every classroom, and children were sitting on window sills. So even though that building was forced to accommodate that number of children, it was by no means of any kind of educational advantage. Anyone who's, who grew up in the suburbs remembers those years because school fields, where places were bigger and they had property, full, school fields during those years were filled with modular classrooms. That's how suburban schools and rural schools handled the huge influx of students that were being educated out of the baby boom. They were able, we don't have fields. We don't have a place to set up a modular classroom when you're in the city. So that overload of children was sitting on window sills, and we were packing them in. In this day and age, there's a lot more rules about how many children can be in a space. And we can't pack our classrooms to 30 or 35 children. We need to have it be an educationally reasonable amount of kids. So our classrooms have 20 to 25 students. In specialized classes, there'll be less than that. And also, a modern high school uses more rooms for other types of activities other than just classrooms. We have media rooms, we have different art rooms. These are all things that a modern, comprehensive high school needs. So when it's stated that there's half as many children as the building was built for, that is an absolute false statement, and the building is full. It's not overfilled. Do we have room to add a few kids to every class? Of course we do. But all in all, that building is being well utilized and efficiently utilized, and it is not, by no means there's a lot of empty space. So I just wanted to clarify that and explain why there could have been a time that that many children were there versus how many children are there now. So I just, I just wanted to mention that. So now, I'm going to open up to board members who have questions, either for Mr. Moffett or the superintendent and/or the committee reports.
Please, Madam Chair. Mr. Moffett, I'd like to just follow up on the increased allocation for the charter schools. It's my understanding it's not because there are more classes being added or more desks being added, it's because there are more students in the charter schools who are now residents of Hoboken than were previously. Is that correct?
Right. What influenced the recalculation, I'll say, is basically when we get the original payment schedule, it's during the budget process, so they're based on projections. So in November, they look at the ASSA count and information provided Department of Education in October, and then they recalculate it. So from what I can glean from the information I had, is that it was a net increase of total students at the charter schools over the projected amount.
And I'm asking this because I asked some parents, and when you say this, they say, "Listen, my class size didn't go up." Charter schools, the charter fixes the number of seats in each class, right?
From what I understand, they have a limited capacity, yes.
So any fluctuations in value, how much we have to pay, is a function of how many of those students are residents of Hoboken and those that aren't?
Right. If you're asking me, we have to pay for students that reside in Hoboken to various charter schools, yes, that's what we would do.
So I just, so as more students in the charter schools are residents of Hoboken, we can expect to pay more for our charter school allocation?
If that's the trend, correct. Because we pay for the students that are residents of Hoboken, not any other community, correct?
So when somebody thought I was implying that the charter schools did something wrong, they did nothing wrong. It's just as their student population changes from more residents or less residents, we're more or less responsible for paying for these students. So the funding formula is if they're students of, residents of Hoboken, we pay essentially the full freight. If they're residents outside of Hoboken and they go to a charter school, the sending district pays for them.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Stromwoll, any questions? Ms. Evans? Mr. Kleppfeld? Mr. Biancomano?
Yes. Just to follow up on Mr. Gold's question, so the funding was increased because the number of charter students were, that were enrolled in our three charter schools in this town were over what was projected in November, correct?
Correct. And as Dr. Gold rightly pointed out, is that they were increased enrollment from students that are residents of Hoboken.
And does this necessarily mean that we under-projected our district enrollments, and therefore the charter school received an extra $200,000?
I wouldn't agree with that, that would be their own projection.
Well, I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, it has no influence. I don't project for charter schools for our purposes. Again, I have to worry about what, the changes in, when I get to the budget, what I anticipate to pay in the growth rate, but I'm very concerned about our own demographic and the trends on the grade levels, and that's the area that I worry about as far as the financial pack to the budget.
So, again, just to re-ask my question, the additional $200,000 for charter schools wasn't because they, their enrollment increased and our enrollment decreased, correct?
That's correct, right.
Okay.
Wait, please, this is really getting a little bit, it's, our enrollment isn't a fixed number. More students are in charter schools who are residents of Hoboken. That's not saying that the number of students that go to our school decreased. It's not, you add some to the charter schools, then by definition you decrease from our schools, that's just not correct. So I just don't want to get the impression that we underestimated the number of students that were going to our public schools. Okay? Am I right?
Yeah, I think I agreed with both of you, yes.
I was going to say, if you looked, if you looked at the audit, it clearly states that we actually went up about 150, I can't, we went up from last year.
But did we go up K to 12? Because that's where they look at.
Yes, it was K to 12 that we went up.
Okay. And then I guess following up on, and Ms. Tyroler, you brought, you mentioned this about the high school and how we're utilizing the space, and I really couldn't agree with you more. Every time I'm in there, I'm, you know, fascinated by all our media labs and our, of course, our television department, or media department, excuse me. The only thing is, I think that it is a factor, and I'm not saying that we need to get up to the level of 1,200 to 1,500 students, but it is a factor that our enrollment at the high school is suffering, and we could use some more students in there. I mean, am I right or wrong? I mean, this is the reason why we put the 7th and 8th grade in there in the first place, because we did have this building, and our enrollment from K to 6 was doing just fine. It was actually increasing.
Right.
Okay.
No, but what I'm saying is that there's, there's actually messaging out there still referring as if the building is half-empty. That's the kind of messaging, and also, and using that comparative number to make that a, which I could see how somebody could surmise that, oh, it held 1,500 in 1972, how could it be, or, you weren't that there then, you're not that old, in 1975, 78, how could it be that, 79? How could it be? How could it be, whatever it was, how can it be that this number is, you know, is different? So that's only...
Okay, so you're just making a general statement that the high school is not, you know, half-empty like other people say, but there certainly is.
Yeah, I think that's important for people to know.
I mean, I certainly believe we could do better on the enrollment there.
Oh, no, no, and I did say that, that we could, doesn't mean we can't add children.
Exactly, okay. All right, and a question for Dr. Braquel, actually. You brought this up in your report. In terms of the vice principal, because I was a little confused about this, I was going to pull it off the agenda to talk about this, you're saying that the vice principal at Connor School has a temporary assignment over in Wallace School, and he's only going to be there a couple of times a week, a couple of times a month?
I would say, yeah, probably three days a week.
Three days a week he's going to be there, so...
Because we don't want him to abandon his role at Connor.
Well, and that's what I was going to ask, so we're, now we're going to have two vice principals at Wallace School three times a week, and zero vice principals at Connor School three times a week?
That's correct, yeah.
And what's the reasoning for doing this?
Is this the appropriate place? Again, I mean, somebody has to put their foot down and say, "These are the things that should have been discussed in committees. We're talking about personnel issues now."
Mr. Gagliardi, can I talk about this here?
I don't think the superintendent should be quizzed on personnel material.
Well, I can bring it into closed session as well. I mean, if it's the proper place, Mr. Gagliardi, I would like to talk about it here.
Or an email.
But I can also talk about it in a board meeting. I mean, I could do an email, but I can also talk about it in a board meeting.
Whether this, let me respond to the question. Whether this is the appropriate place on the agenda is a different question. Because it's, the, my understanding is that this was the opportunity to comment on committee reports. However, I don't believe that anything that's been said with regard to the position is the sort of thing that is required to be discussed in executive session. And so I think the placement on the agenda is a different story, but I'm not troubled by the content of the public discussion here.
Okay, thank you. So is...
Right, so once we had three people, we had a principal, we had a disciplinarian, and a vice principal, and the disciplinarian position was not refilled after it was abandoned. So we went down to just the principal and a vice principal. It's a very large school, and I feel that we need some help over there in terms of just the general department, the playground, and the whole building itself. So that's why we're transferring him on a temporary basis to see if that's workable. And I think it's going to be a situation that evolves, Peter, you know? And I'm going to have to continue to take a look at that and deploy the staff where I feel is necessary.
Okay, so it's almost like a testing period, you just want to see if...
We have to see how it evolves, yeah.
Okay. And then just one final thing. Mr. Moffett, thank you so much for your report on scaffolding, I really appreciate you coming back. It looks like we're going to have to shell out some more money next month since the SDA is kind of still dragging their feet in terms of getting back the proper documentation we need for us to send out the bids, correct? I mean, we're probably going to have a resolution next month saying, asking for more funds for the scaffolding at Brant School, correct?
Yes, I would anticipate either next meeting or the following meeting that you would have a resolution to approve a contract to cover the cost of that scaffolding, yes.
And again, the SDA, I mean, Ms. Mitchell brought it up in her report, the SDA did say that they were going to pay the complete cost. So literally, it's, they're dragging their feet, and they're spending more money because they're dragging their feet. Am I right or wrong? That's, I, when I deal with the SDA, I keep saying it, but that's the intent of this administration.
The Director of Facilities is on board to just drive that whole issue home. I'm here to do that, pick up the phone and keep that on the table, make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks. I've been assured that it's been accommodated in the existing documents as accepted by the SDA. So that's the intent, and the administration's continued to pursue it until we get it all funded.
And thank you again for the report. That's...
Thank you. Then if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the agenda, and questions first. Oh, 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 yeah, questions first. And just a reminder for public comment, you have five minutes to speak, Tom usually times for us, and you say what you need, everything you need to say if you have a question. It can't, it isn't, it is not answered when you're at the podium, just people will take note, and if either a board member or the administration wants to respond to any comments or questions raised by individuals during that, during their comments, they will after everyone has commented, so...
On the agenda-only items, the first speaker is Patricia Waiters.
Okay. Ms. Waiters?
I don't know if you made a mistake with agenda items versus the public portion, but I am speaking on agenda items. And with this document here, I know you didn't get time to review it, I don't want to be interrupted to get my point across, being that lately you do try to not show it on the air, but people have concerns just like the board members. With that being said, I have a few agenda items tonight that's very serious that I want to discuss. Mr. Bian, Mr. Peter, okay, because I can't see you, I want you to take us very serious and stay involved and ask questions. I notice again tonight every time you talk and spoke how you feel or question, you have the right, just like any other trustee up there, Mr. Gold really interrupted you three times, but we are all taking notes. Again, I spoke with you and I met with you, and I found it kind of disturbing that you did not attend this committee meeting with the reference of the moving of the principal. I only told you when I called you that day, it raised concerns when people come to me, because that is your right, and because you can't make a meeting, it's their sole duty to get in touch with you and tell you what's going on in those committees. And those committees is worth the people that's sitting on it, okay? So with that being said, I'm not using my energy in that, but what I am going to say tonight is, we need your full support. I was told by the state, and I gave you the paperwork, that we can have any board member because they can't get directly involved on a local level, okay? I went to the state and I went to the county, which is true. Also, which is mandated by state law, is if a board member have issues and their parents back you, the faculty back you, and the students, you can order a state takeover. And we hoping that you take this serious to heart, because I refuse to have this majority intimidate and bully the employees. I mean, you know what's been going on with the last elections, this new innocent superintendent don't, unfortunately, we will educate him, okay? But what happens is, it's disturbing every time there's an election, mid-school year you want to move a principal? That's what raises a flag. I don't care if you come with all the legal mumble jumble, I'm calling the facts. This been going on in Hoboken for years and years and years, and it got to stop somewhere. If no one is going to be loyal, at least be loyal to those students and those parents, okay? And on agenda to see transfers immediately after election is disturbing, and it's going to continue, Peter, if we don't get your support, okay? Now, one parent come up here and talk about being attacked during an election, and they want to move the principal right away? When I've been coming for two years with all of these concerns about making Wallace a private school, my kid's been going to Wallace since birth, okay? Now, Wallace has completely changed. How many times I stood at this microphone just to see that tonight the auditor stood up here himself? And then you, Ms. Mitchell, had the nerve to talk about after-school programs? I asked you about the after-school programs and enrichment programs in Wallace that's charging lots amounts of money for the free and reduced lunch people that cannot afford it, and we're being shut out, okay? So when I get an agenda, okay, and all of these are agenda items, to see that on an agenda, or see you even sit up there and speak about what's going on, and like really shut us out, and Housing Authority or the projects, like you alleged, that we, Mr. Gold said itself, that we washed away from, and y'all treat us different, I'm tired of the segregation, okay? I am sick and tired of it, all right? And it's being shown. Now, what's happening in Wallace is why Peter a little upset and confused, he don't mean to talk about it in the public portion. Myself and a bunch of other parents confronted him, because it's disturbing to us, December, right after election, mid-school year, for you want to bring another principal in, okay? Where we have no representation whatsoever for the minorities, you're going to move one principal from Connors to Wallace? We don't understand it. Even though it's poor, could you please explain to us when you come out of closed session, because we deserve that right? Not only that, on the front page it says about the Open Public Meeting Act, that's why I want to got the legal documents, and I want you to review the Jersey City Board of Education's lawsuit with the board for trying to shut out the public portion. Mysteriously, before and after the election on Channel 77 and 78, on files for the ones that have files, 46, they don't never show the board meeting. You showing programs that happened four years ago where those students then carried on and moved on. And it's disturbing because it only during election time, and when somebody stand up there... And it's disturbing because it only during election time, and when somebody stand up here like myself and try to educate members of the public that can't come out here, that you don't show the meeting. You do not show the meeting, and that should be looked into. I'm tired of watching repeats of something that happened four years ago, okay? So if it's no big top secret and we all can't go to Hudson T to your little T settings, that's not our fault, okay? And this is a big agenda here. So when you put an agenda and talk about agenda items, instead of raising your hand, try to accommodate the public so I can get through these agenda items. I talk fast as it is, just as fast as I can go. But you can let an auditor or somebody stand here for two hours. See, that's what I'm talking about, unfair practice. I'm, what you want me to do? Eat this whole agenda up or not just express how the people feel? Okay, so now if you're going to run for the board, at least get the rules down right where you could be fair and equal to everybody, okay? Because you holding up your hand five minutes, but I'm going as fast as I can. Approval of the minutes. When you approve these minutes, that means each and every one of you approving every action that take place at the meeting, am I right? Yes, you can answer me later. So before you approve the minutes, review your agenda, and if things is being done that's illegal or you see that's not fair or covering up things for Mr. Gold, still speak on it. The movement with Connors, I'm gonna skip that with the vice principal from Connors. Bullying, definitely. I got so many calls about even the teachers administrators feeling that they're being bullied, okay?
Ms. Waiters?
I'm wrapping up the agenda, ma'am. I'm going as fast as I can.
Your five minutes are up.
Not on agenda items, I'm going as fast as I can, Ms. Council President. I'm wrapping it up. And this definitely need to be looked into with the bullying and suppression. It creates a hostile work environment, it's not good for our kids or our employees. I'll finish the rest on the public portion.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Moffett?
Mr. Jason Yun Hendricks.
Good evening all. Jason Yun Hendricks, Monroe Street. Just a few, just a few comments. So, congrats again on the, on the assessments, the report, sounds like more good work again this year. It's, it's no doubt the result of everybody's effort. Cost control, which has been a pet issue of some, and it's always in the back of everybody's mind, I'm sure. But I feel like it's, it's also about doing things by the book, you know, by the letter, and that it seems, at least from my, you know, from this side of the podium, like that has really been happening across the board for years now, and that's a group effort too. So congrats on that. I just, I wanted to make a quick comment on the, the achievement of more athletes achieving, you know, doing better in academics. I forget what the, the term is, the, it's the sports directors.
Athletic director honor list.
Yeah. So that's great. It reminded me last year that there was a football game on one of the SAT Saturdays, and this had nothing to do with the district, of course, and has nothing to do with any of the staff, but I remember it was brought up and it was raised with, I think whoever the association is that runs the, the football state championships, the high school level sports.
The JSIA.
Yes. So as a, as a side note, it would be great to follow up with them, maybe it's the, maybe the sports director can make a phone call, make sure that they live up to their commitment from last year, which is to be a little more mindful about scheduling. But for you guys, what I would love to hear about in the next couple of meetings, like whenever it's appropriate, is maybe a report from the guidance department about their plans for the testing schedules around ACT and SAT and how they're prepping the kids for college prep and that sort of thing. Because they were hugely helpful and supportive to my kids before they graduated last year, and I'm sure they're going to do a great job again, but it's worth talking about. Last thing I wanted to mention was the comment about taxpayers, which I think is a great point to make. I don't think it's, it's something in the abstract, actually. Anybody that earns a paycheck has money taken out for county and state, and some of that money comes back to the district. So unless you're just not working at all, which some people, you know, are, have that unfortunate circumstance, but at some point in their life, there's a good chance they did, if they pay sales tax even.
Exactly.
It all makes a difference. But I want to commend the board, though, for pretty consistently not focusing first merely on the taxpayers' concerns, which so many boards in New Jersey and around the country do. The focus first is on the children and their families and the services this district is responsible for providing. It is not to serve the taxpayers and their interests first. It's something that should be considered. I'm a taxpayer of all of these varieties here in town, but it's not for the taxpayers and it's not for people who are looking for a job from the district either, right? It's first and foremost, your job is to focus on the needs of the children and insofar as those other needs can intersect and work alongside or dovetail into the needs of the children and their families, then great. But I commend you for pretty consistently focusing on the kids, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday all.
Thank you. Okay, with that, does someone want to move for a consent agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Can I ask questions before we vote on the consent agenda on several agendas? I don't need to pull anything.
Oh, should we? We usually do that. Do we have questions?
Questions first.
Okay, let's do questions first on the agenda, and then we'll vote as consent. So I'll start down on your side with questions.
Dr. Brokaw, nine point one zero, the approval of students for school choice status. I think we, I asked about this last month and you, and before I asked about it, you actually took it off the agenda. What restrictions on the amount of students does the cap impose? I think you were going to go to the states and find out.
Right. We have a certain number of slots, and we're just about out of those. Next year we'll have eleven new slots. So these four, these four kids were counted in our AASA, which is our student count for financial purposes and enrollment purposes. So we're going to be doing these four and probably no more for the rest of the year.
So the new cap is in place then? The new cap started at the beginning of this year, correct?
Yeah.
And what was the maximum amount of students we could have as school choice students?
I think it was one sixty-one bill, right?
Yes, I, one sixty-one.
One sixty-one.
And, and you're saying that with these four, we're at that maximum, or?
Yeah. And what I'm also saying is some slots will open up due to graduation next year for the school choice people.
So and, okay, so next year it'll increase by eleven, so it'll go up to one seventy-two and hopefully it'll increase every year.
Unless the state changes.
Their mind again, exactly.
The states.
They leave and the number stays the same.
Right, they leave and the number stays the same.
The number stays the same.
In other words, the number of kids at one sixty-one, we'll cap, it'll be one sixty-one minus twelve through graduation, so.
Oh, I see, gotcha, okay. All right. Just a curiosity question, nine point one one, approval of staff for theater department production of Grease. I was just wondering, is there going to be a play in the future that we're going to be using our high school musicians instead of paying close to three thousand dollars for outside musicians?
It's quite possible, Peter, at some point. I don't think we're ready at this point to do that, but that's quite possibly something that we can aim for.
Personally, I would like to see it, I mean, if they're ready and.
It's usually a mixture, though, Peter. In most high schools that I've, including my daughter's own high school, Rambo, have some students and some professionals that mix it up in the orchestra, so, which is nice.
It's good to be learning. And then just one more question, finance, ten point zero six, the approval of contracts. Mr. Moffett, we're increasing, and Mr. Rich was here tonight, we're increasing the auditor's contract from seventy thousand to a hundred thousand. We're giving him thirty thousand dollars more tonight?
Yes, that's correct.
And what's the reasoning behind that?
If I may. Yeah, we looked at the last year's amount spent on services from the accounting firm. This comes in total a little bit less than last year. We based the last resolution, which I think was in June, if I remember off the top of my head, on spending at that point. But now that we have it all in, and it's for the projects that we've spent over time, including the budget book and other special projects that they performed, we felt that an increase to the same dollar amount, which is probably about, like I said, about five thousand dollars less than last year, that would increase it by that amount.
So last year, you came to us looking for an additional amount of money for the auditor as well. So I'm just curious, when the auditor, when we rehire the auditor, why don't we start with a hundred thousand dollars instead of seventy thousand dollars for the auditor in the future?
Yeah, that's the intent, that's where we were trying to build. So that will be next year, we'll consider that a one-shot deal next year. This was the tweaking, if I could say, of that dollar amount because it was kind of caught in time. So we were able to revisit that, look at last year's purchase orders, add them all up, come up with the number, and that's what you see tonight.
And does the auditor come to us and say, we need seventy thousand dollars, and then they go over the amount, or do we give a set number?
No, what happens is they give us an amount on a project basis. So for their audit, it'll be one number. If we have a special project that the board was interested in, like in the past, I'll approach them for some estimates, and we make sure that fits in there. So it's not like it's uncontrolled, if I will say, it's something that they present information to us as we go, and they'll discuss it with me if they're getting close to that number, just so that we would know, and I would then report out to the board.
All right, so, okay, so.
Mr. Biancamano?
Yeah, so just so I understand this correctly, the auditor came to us and said, we need seventy thousand dollars to perform the original analysis, and then the district went back to the auditor and said, oh, can you do X, Y, and Z extra? And that's why we're being charged for the thirty thousand dollars. We initiated him to do more work, and that's why he's charging us more, correct?
Correct.
I see. Thank you so much.
Ms. Mitchell? No, no questions. And so, Mr. Moffett, the, the auditor's bill is similar to the way we do the legal bill, that we increase it as we go through, you make your best.
Right, what I try to do is, since they're the professionals of the district, like the attorney would be, is we would do a separate action for them at the beginning of the year.
Right.
We're going to get there with a contract, that amount, so that when we reappoint that individual at our annual meeting or at the time where we would do it for the fiscal year in the future, yeah, it would be one set amount.
And auditing costs are similar this year as to what they were last year?
Yes, this will be a little bit less than last year.
Little bit less this year that we're spending than we did last year.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I, oh, anybody over here have questions with the agenda? I'm sorry. No, no? Okay, so we had a motion from Leon to vote on the consent, and a second from Jean Marie.
Oh, Jean Marie, I had it for Ira and Jean Marie.
Shall I call roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Biancamano?
No on the minutes, six point zero one and six point zero two, yes on everything else.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes, on September public abstain on executive session, yes on both in October.
Ms. Strommel?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes. And Mr. Gagliardi pointed out to me that I didn't give the administration or the board a chance to comment on agenda comments. So we'll take, we can do that now if anyone has a comment on agenda comments. Anyone from this side? No? Does Dr. Brokaw? Dr. Brokaw, do you have any comments on anything that was brought up at the podium?
Not really, except one clarification. I think it was mentioned that we're transferring principals, that's not true. The principals who are working in their facilities right now will continue to work in their facilities. We're simply transferring part of the time, one of the assistant principals to help out at Wallace.
I'd like to just, go ahead, Ms. Sobolov.
I just really, I think there seems to be a little confusion about the committee system and how the committee system works. I just really quickly wanted to kind of share with everybody, you know, as a board, we can't meet with more than five people, that's a quan. So we work on a committee system, and four people are on those committees. And during the reorg in January, everybody is invited to sit on the committee. Some committees are during the day because we need staff there of governance or finance, but everybody on this dais is invited to be on the committee. In fact, Francis Rhodes Kearns was chair of one of the committees once, Mr. Biancamano was on the committees. Now, you can invite people to be on the committee, you can't force a board member to be on a committee. So people who have time or make time in their day, sit on those committees and we see who's here and who's not. So if you can't make the committee, I think one of the comments to Mr. Gold's comment was, it's then incumbent upon you to email, you know, phone various committee people, discuss it with each other, or discuss it with the administration. But I wanted to, for people to understand that that's how it works. Four of us are on each committee, there are often empty chairs, we call them, and if there's an empty chair, a notice will go out to everybody, and then any other board member can come sit in on that committee. So I just wanted to make people understand that it's open to everybody, everybody has an equal chance to be on the committee and be heard. So I just wanted to mention that. And then one other thing, I really, this is the second meeting in a row that bullying was mentioned, and it's, it's kind of shocking and disturbing, and I, and I want people to understand that there's very, very specific things that happen when you say bullying to a board member, a teacher, an administrator, and a very certain specific set of things happen when you use those words, and they happen very quickly. So I would, I would urge anybody who has an issue with a teacher, an issue with a child, two children in the class, it has been my experience that I've seen in the different schools, that it is taken care of very quickly. We have child study team members and psychologists, social workers, teachers, they come in and talk to the whole class, they don't call one student out and embarrass them or call them out. So I would urge anybody who has any kind of questions or concerns to speak to the teacher and the principal of their, of their buildings immediately. Thank you.
Any other?
I think I'd also like to clarify a little bit about the breakfast, best, breakfast program. In speaking with Sedekso, they had, although he didn't produce a spreadsheet this month, he had said about, was talking about participation in breakfast programs, and that's among the high schoolers, Wallace School, Calabro, and Connors, and also the pre-K. And the percentages of Connors were the lowest of children that are participating in that breakfast program. And it's about children having breakfast, having, children being prepared for school, but better than running into school hungry or coming in late. And I feel very proud that, that we're looking at this and that this board will invite these children in for their breakfast, and I think it's something that they should certainly take advantage of, every child in this district. Thank you.
And I just wanted to commend, comment and thank the committee chairs. One thing that as a board, I think we've gotten very organized with is making sure that when there's absences at, if, when a chair is alerted that there will be a vacancy at their meeting, one of the four people cannot attend. You all have been really good about getting an email out to announce that there's an empty seat so that someone can, you know, call and say they'd like, or email back and say they'd like the seat. And I'm very happy with how we've really done that very consistently and in the same way so that people can, so. With that, we come to public comments. So, so, Mr. Moffett?
The first speaker is Gary Enrico.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to invite the board next Thursday night at seven PM for the holiday concert. The music department will put on, kids are practicing, everything looks great. I heard that Santa May, if he's not too busy, may make an appearance there. So if you need to ask for something for Christmas, that would be a great night. But what I'm really here for tonight is to talk about our event, which is December twentieth two thousand and fourteen at Hoboken High School. Coming to these meetings, I'm president, I think, almost thirteen years, and tonight, we haven't heard it, but people continually knock the system, knock our teachers, knock the students, knock our performance. And the association has been trying to figure out a way to get the message out as to exactly what we do and what the Hoboken Public Schools do. So what happened was Mark Martone was named New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, which is a big, a big honor. I know the board, you know, handed him a plaque or whatever, but I don't think you realize, the board, what an honor this is for Hoboken. Because if you were down at convention, which you weren't probably unless you were a teacher, but they made a big thing about it, and Hoboken was mentioned constantly, you know, and Mark got up and made a beautiful speech, as he always does. So we felt that as the association, we have to do something to honor him. That's how this whole thing started. So we came about, we were going to have an event, we figured, oh, we'll have a cocktail party up in Stevens, and, you know, the parents would come. But then, you know, if the parents come, then, you know, we get the politicians, and the whole thing started to take on a different take for us. But NJA has been big in supporting this, and we came up with a plan that we are going to have, hopefully, all of our teachers present at their tables at their school. We're going to have the cafeteria, we'll have the breakfast with Santa, like we did last year up at the Yelts, but we're going to have it here. And we're going to have the gym filled with all activities for kids. We're going to have the bouncy house, we have four, we have four big things that'll get blown up. We're going to have Mickey and Minnie, we're going to have face painting. We're going all out. This is our, this is our opportunity to let the people of Hoboken have a chance to come and meet us. Because a lot of the people don't come to the district. I mean, I stated in front of the board many times why I feel they don't. I don't want to rehearse that, but I don't think they know exactly what we do. So this is, this is our opportunity. All right? And NJA is going out, they're supplying the money, and it's a good amount of money. And they've given us, we have had contact with NJA, they've come down, they're specialists, we've been working, we met today, we're going to meet a couple more times. So we took a full-page ad out and a reporter, paid his salary probably for two months. We're going to, we're going to have another, another full-page ad out. It's kind of funny when you deal with the Hoboken reporter, but it was expensive, but, and we have all posters, which hopefully, we're going to be putting around Hoboken, we're going to be sending them home with the kids, not the poster, but, you know, a piece of paper. So I'm asking the board members, if it's possible at all, that day, I think it would be nice to be present. We're going to have a ceremony at 10:00 AM. We have to include some politicians, I had no other choice, but that's how it is when NJA is involved sometimes, you have to do it. Well, we're going to do that, and Vice President of NJA is coming to the event, which, if you understand how NJA works, it's a pretty big honor for, you know, her busy schedule. She has cleared the schedule, she will be here the whole day. So I'm asking the board, I know we're going to have your support, I'm counting on it, actually. I know I'll have it. And I'm going to ask Ruth to maybe put some remarks together on behalf of the board. And I think that would be nice. And we're going to celebrate, Mark. And as I said here, let's celebrate the great system that we have. Because I think we take shots here, meeting after meeting, and we go over the same thing.
Could you say the time and day again?
It's 10 to 2. There's going to be a lot of activities going on, but that's just the way we have to do it. We're trying to get everything in, something for the kids. We're going to have little workshops, you know, 15-minute workshops in different rooms, if you want to find out about different events, or things, or topics that we're going to have. So we're going all out, really on behalf of all of us, the community. Because we are a community. I know when I get up in front of the public sometimes, and I say, "I love this system," some of our members laugh at me, but I was a graduate of Hoboken High, and it was more than 1,500 kids in the class, in the school, believe me. 69, 70, and 71, it was probably 2,000 kids. So that's what we're going to do. All right, so...
The date again, and the time?
December 20th, 10 to 2. We're going to start at 10 o'clock. Marie Bliston, the Vice President of NJA, is going to give a little talk. And they came on November 20, I think it was November 20th, they filmed a New Jersey School close-up on Mark Martin, which, and we had one on with one of our graduates that they played at the convention. So Hoboken, the word is out there, and so I'll just count on the wall. If you're being there, Ruth, if you could prepare some remarks. I don't want to, I figured I'd give you a little heads up, I didn't want to do it that day. So, all right? We look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
And you want to make sure it's on the City website and the City Facebook feed?
We, we are all over, actually.
Okay. Thank you.
Not to beat a dead horse, you're giving up your Saturday to let Hoboken know...
No, well, it's not, believe me, it's not that. It's just that, I mean, I don't know how many times we could just stay here and listen to people just keep bashing us, and, you know, the association felt it was time, you know, maybe we will make a difference. There's a possibility, nothing, we may not gain one kid, but the object is, is that we're out there and find out what we're doing.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Waiters is next.
That's right. Thank you. All right, no, well, don't take it personal. Sorry to rain on your parade. I also, I also applaud, I also congratulated Mr. Martin on a job well done. That's still to say, you don't brush the other problems under the rug. Now, like we all seen all over the world this week, and I noticed none of you mentioned it about what happened in Ferguson, you see marches and protesters all around the world. A few students came to me and told me they won't stand up to say to pledge allegiance to the flag. If you noticed tonight, I said I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. None of the board members, I'm surprised, but I know Jersey City did, entertain those kids. We had an incident in Hoboken a couple of months ago, that was an Allegiant Charter School. The courtesy was given to the students and the parents to come in and have counseling, and closed the school down and catered to the kids. What happened with Ferguson? Okay? So now, it bothers me when African-American and Latinos come to me and say, "Mrs. Waiters, what happened?" They xing their teachers, they xing their other students, they xing their classmates, and it's like, nobody mentioned it. Nobody mentioned about Ferguson. Okay? We have feelings. Okay? So when I, if I was an educator and a teacher, and I see the students don't stand up and pledge allegiance to the flag, and some young man stand up in my daughter's class, which was really bothering her, and said, "Mommy, he said there's no justice for all." Okay? Look at the blank faces, but all of y'all run to serve a whole community. Okay? Now, it is good, though, that he mentioned that. Let's be proud of the state. I'm in the process right now of a state takeover. I have the Hudson Reporter paper from Sunday, October 11, 2009, Judy to the rescue. For your, for those of you that don't know Judy, she was the monitor that was sent in from the state to change the downright corruption that was going on in Hoboken. It continues, but all of you again, sit up there with the blank faces, because you know what the mayor did was dirty, but that was your sole supporter, so it goes untouched. Again, front page of the Hudson Reporter. I was a mayoral candidate, I didn't show up for the, for the form to explain to the people what I was going to do for my city, but yet still, Ms. Stonewall and her party didn't show up, and they feel like they claimed victory to sit up there. Here we go again, ethics and morals, just to place it on the record. Okay? Now, with that being said, Mr. Biancamano, I was trying to tell you, explain to them, Mr. Barfield came to this board, and it was told to him they have no funding for an African-American cultural trip. I told my daughter, which is the president of the African-American Club, to show that there's no funding, but tonight, I hear that the order to get in a $30,000 raise. Okay? And it bothers me because missed the plays, the grease, and everything else, and all the fundings for everything else. Now, the African-American Cultural Committee, they're willing to, they're willing to, they're willing to work. I told my daughter, "Let's see, could we fundraise, or do whatever," but Mr. Barfield was told, "There's no funding." Okay? And that's bothering me because it seemed like they, and plus, they also asked, being that Ferguson was mostly targeted to the African-American, no one came to him. We have Ms. Blue, we have Mr. Barfield, that would sit down and give these kids a counseling session or something, but here we go again, no support. All right? So I'm asking you tonight, since Ms. Sobolov said bullying be addressed immediately, what about the bullying with staff members that's intimidated to come forward because they're going to be retaliated against or moved? Okay? So when I say bullying, anything I say, I have it in writing. Okay? I have Ms. McCutcheon, Susan McCutcheon, from 2007 to 2008, at the committee meetings I attend, for people like you that was on the board a long time. I save everything right here. So when I come to this microphone, I don't make anything up. I save everything, from the superintendent appointment, from Mr. Ruzak, I have it all here, for any of you, if you want to review it. But it's just bothering me because you want to sweep everything under the rug after the election and take the small ride into the next six months, when I go pick up my petitions again. I told you, I'm not disappearing. And if you look around us, you don't see no other board members. I take this very serious, because I interact with these students, and the principals, and the people that work in these facilities, and it bothers me when they're not being addressed and being, taken a known disregard to. So please, again, could you look into that for me and see what's going on, and I would appreciate some support for the African-American Cultural Committee, and with the, with the protests that's going on, every channel you turn on the TV, don't ignore it. Don't ignore it. And here's a copy, I'm enclosing, okay? The reason we feel this way, when we talk about social media, is to see your website, that Kids First, graphics of a Benjamin Pinkney sitting in this audience, to label the Jacksonville Housing Authority as projects, crack addict mothers, and everything else. It's a copy for each and every one of you, and for you to be board members, you too, Ms. Sobolov, with your sister with access to a computer, read the website, and read, your name is in this, it's not nice, to discriminate and talk about our housing authority kids like this. Here's a copy for each and every one of you in writing, and I want you to get back in touch with me right away, because this is disturbing and is disgusting. There go your answer while the charter schools is building up, because there's all the seventh grade parents that didn't want to be with our kids. Exactly what you said, Mr. Enrico. You was right. The white, well-educated, Mr. Gold, that's where your numbers come from, the charter school. There go your answer to your question. I noticed all the seventh graders, even my kid, Brent from Wallace, is in the charter schools. You're right. That's why you see the Hoboken addresses now, because they don't want to interact with what you allege as project kids. In your report, read it. They don't want to be known with the housing authority kids. This is disgusting. A copy for each of you. Thank you.
Can I respond? Any comments from the board before we close? Ms. Sobolov?
I would like to make it very clear that I would, I would love to see what Ms. Waiters has. I don't know what she's waving around. I want to make it very clear that I have no idea what she's talking about. I have never said any of those kind of words. I don't know what she's...
There's a website.
I don't have a website.
There we go.
Okay. Wait, wait. Now, Patty, Patty, also, I, we had...
I've asked her a thousand times, don't be a little smart from Martha's [inaudible].
Patty, I am trying...
Shh, 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 calm down, everyone.
What I want... Hey, Ms. Waiters.
Irene, Irene, Ms. Sobolov.
I would like the record to show that there is nothing on here from either me or my sister. My sister...
[inaudible].
It is not. I don't even know how to answer this. The record shows I don't, I do not have a website, my sister doesn't have a website.
Okay, just comments, Irene.
Okay. What I wanted to say was, Ms. Waiters, Ms. Waiters, please, I was interested and curious to hear what you were speaking about the African-American culture trip, and what I, so I'm curious if anybody could answer that for me, but what I would like to say is that you have my email, you have everybody's email up here. Okay, okay. I, don't put your allegations on anybody.
Irene, directing.
What I want to say is that, to come up at a public meeting, it doesn't always get the results that you want to get. So if there is an immediate reaction, or concern, or something that's going on, a trip, there's no way that a board member would know something down at that level, a kind of a micromanaging level. So if you don't want to email me, we're just fine. Everybody else's emails, things are up here, that, it can be resolved, or we can understand where it's coming from and what the trip is about. Nobody would ever be against. I'm the biggest fan of field trips and all kinds of culture trips. Ms. Pick, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
We have, we have another speaker.
Oh, we have another speaker?
Oh, we had another speaker?
Oh, we have another speaker. All right. And then maybe you speak.
Mr. Yunia Hendricks is indicating he does not want to speak at this moment, at this time. So that'll be the end of the list of speakers.
Do we have another speaker?
No, Mr. Yun Hendricks was the next speaker. He's declined to take the podium.
Okay. Do you want to sign up for a public comment to make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. Or just put...
I just want to give a [inaudible].
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Pick.
Robin Pickphieh, with the principal at Hoboken Junior Senior High School. And right after we had closed down the budget, Mr. Barfield had approached me about doing a field trip for the African-American Club. He wanted to go to Broadway and purchase tickets. And I just felt at that time, after the budget had been closed, that it was not an appropriate time, and I had made the recommendation that we do fundraising, and I would be more than happy to help with that process. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was this year, Ms. Pick? I'm sorry.
That was probably about two weeks ago, Ms. Moffett, when we, you know, got the memo about the budget closing. So it was about two weeks ago, right? It was the week, day after that happened.
Thank you. Comments from the board before we close? Mr. Biancamano?
Sure. Dr. Perkel, there were, and Ms. Sobolov touched on this before, there were some comments on staff members being bullied. If that is the case, I don't know if you heard anything, I'm not asking you if you heard anything or not, but I hope that it does get investigated if that is the case.
If it comes to me, it'll get investigated.
Okay, thank you. And just a quick comment, and it's unfortunate she couldn't make it tonight, and, Madam President, you said some kind words at last meeting, and I just want to just say a few more words quickly about Ms. Rhodes Kearns. I want to thank her for her service. She was up here for 12 and a half years as an unpaid volunteer, and we're all going through it right now as unpaid volunteer, and know how much work is required for this board. I'm certainly going to miss her very, very much. She was certainly, I believe, a fighter for this district, knew the issues very, very well, taught me a lot when I first came onto board three years ago. And anybody on this board can tell you what a fighter she was in closed session. She really, really stuck up for what she believed in, and that's so important to me. So it's unfortunate she's not here tonight, but I know she's probably going to be watching this meeting. And Bubbles Fran, I'm going to miss you greatly, and best of luck in anything you do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biancamano. Ms. Mitchell, before we close?
No, I just, I'm looking at this paper, I'm completely befuddled and confused, I